Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Ms. Sue Kane and Ms. Rena Scudder.
Ms. Dan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I believe this is our third meeting, I think, on discussion for this year's budget. Before we turn it over to Mr. Sandbig, I guess, if you have anything.
I think that there's lots of people usually listening to us, maybe over the TV and maybe some county commissioners and that sort of thing. I'd like to start, you have a copy of this, it's the Budget Committee meeting for today. Some facts at the top that we really need to relate. The medical insurance is a 24.6 percent increase effective on 1-1-2014, plus four months of this January's 20 percent increase. So, that's what's adding some of the dollars to our budget. There's a 1.5 percent state teacher raise, which we apply to also our classified employees, so that explains part of our increase there, which we match, have to match out of local funds and that. We've mentioned several times to you before that 2.1 million in additional technology expenditures to help pay for the park assessment or the common core assessment, but that should be state revenue. But, you know, when you add 2.1 million to our budget, then everyone says, "Oh my, that's 2.1," but it's not local money, is what we're talking about here. So, as board members and working in this office, we need to be able to help separate for people, hey, this is not something we're asking you to pay in taxes, that's a one-time thing from the state for technology purposes. Of course, staffing Stewarts Creek High is a big issue for us, and I can tell you right now, we're looking, we're very actively involved in that, have done quite a bit of it. We actually have pulled, we're trying to target around 50 teachers from other schools, and we've upped to, what, 47 this morning, or so, 46, 47 this morning?
It was 48.
Forty, 48, okay. So, and we're actually even pulling teachers from schools that are not in the original staffing or zoning, which was Rivadale, Blackman, Smyrna, Laverne. We're actually going back and looking at the other schools also, if there's an extra position there, because every time we can save a position, then that works into it too. So, yes, sir.
We made a promise to Laverne High School to give them additional resources.
We're aware of that.
I don't know if I need to ask this question yet, but are we looking at not, is that part of this process?
Now, they will lose some, based on the numbers. Mr. Zego can tell you even more about if you want to.
I ran a preliminary report for Laverne High School. Their current teacher-student ratio is about 17.3. Their max number's third, so they're substantially lower than the majority of other high schools' two, three, four teachers per student.
You're talking presently?
Yes, even after what we've done, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I've been working very well with Mr. Ash over there, and we've been working together doing that, even changing up some of the scheduling to give them more additional help within their freshman, upcoming freshman classes being large, looking at some reading classes as well, providing teachers with additional classes that are even on the alternate levels.
We go to the, we're not saying, you know, just, we've got to have two. We're saying now if the principals are looking at your schedules, looking at how many, because now, most of them have actually next-year students in their database, they're building their schedules and that sort of thing. So, where could you, you know, which class sizes, that sort of thing. So, they usually tell us, it may be in English, it may be in math, maybe a science, CTE, or some area it might be. So, we're doing that. The next thing, draw your attention to, changes since the March version, which is our meeting number two, now we're meeting three. The medical insurance is a big thing, so that's upped our numbers, 24.6 percent increase instead of 16 percent that was used in March. So, you roughly have another 8.6 percent increase. That certainly raises your numbers, you know, we're a little bit below 300 million earlier, but you're going to see because of that 8 percent. We are doing some other things, half teaching position Holloway changed to full-time EA, adult ed, there's some changes in this version today. You remember when you were here at our last meeting, we were working with the state labor and workforce development, after we got that contract, had to change, Jeff had to change some numbers and that, to make all of that balance, to work it into our budget as that information was coming in. Though we've added some additional contract services in transportation for special ed and some additional structural materials and supplies in vocational ed. Again, what happens always when we start this process, new numbers come in, state changes, you know, what you'll get, and they still may be a few before the end of the year, but we're further along now than we were. So, Jeff, let take over, and I think you're going to talk medical insurance, right?
Uh-huh. Since that is the biggest single change at Stewarts Creek High this year. We had a preliminary, non-voting meeting of the insurance committee, I think on 4th of April, just to meet with our consultant, get an idea of where the numbers were. From conversations with Ms. Stinson, our insurance director, and Ms. Nolan, the county finance director, we knew we were in bad shape. But anyway, kind of a consensus offshoot between me and Ms. Nolan and just the discussions that we had at that meeting, this 11-by-17 sheet, the final figure round up being 24.6 percent, which doesn't quite round to the detail on your, the agenda sheet, are they? Yes, sir.
Some of the board members might not understand our program right now, because we're partially self-funded.
Right.
But that's my term.
Right.
And we, in reality, we have three different groups here.
Yes, sir.
And they may not all understand that, and is that okay?
Yes, it'd be good before.
Give a topical overview of what?
Well, the top half of the numbers are our active employees. We have 18-year-olds, we have some active employees in their 70s. But if you are an active employee, and I number the columns 1, 2, and 3, those are our 10-month rates. They are withheld from the checks, we make the matching employer contribution September through the end of June, and our employees are then prepaid for July and August. So, that group is our active employees. We have three groups of retirees. The hardest group, the most challenging group, has tended to be our pre-65, because we have their prescription coverage and their medical insurance. In the last couple of years, that has been the group where we've seen some adverse lines. We also have two groups of post-65. We went through a very painful process a couple of years ago because of the government accounting standard bulletin number 45, which required us to start accounting for these post-retirement benefits other than pension, which we already did account for. So, one of the things that had happened, because people were trying to be real nice to retirees and all, we had fallen behind on the rate structure that was approved for retirees. At commission level, a decision would be made, well, we're not going to send that through this year. So, what we did in coming to terms with this Gadsby 45, we have an actual liability that we are building, is a theory. Our 22-year-old teacher, we are incurring some liability that we will start paying out when he or she retires from day one. That's what Gadsby 45 is trying to force us to recognize. So, we already had our groups carved into active, pre-65, and post-65. We broke that post-65 into two groups. The grandfathered group, we are covering 75 percent of their premium, and a lower amount if it's a husband and wife. The non-grandfathered group, we are covering 50 percent of their premium.
And this is retired, 65 and retired.
Right, and then it's also 50 percent on the pre-65 group. Now, like Mr. Blair said, we are largely self-insured. We have a $750,000 stock loss insurance policy. Whenever in a plan year, someone's claims exceed 3/4 of a million dollars, then our insurance company will pay anything over that 3/4 of a million. And what we look at each time we do renewals is how many claims have we had that crossed that stock loss amount, and we look at the cost of that premium. We went from a half million up to 3/4 of a million a few years ago, because we haven't had many claims in several years, and the premium cover at the half million versus 3/4 was much higher. So, that's not part of it.
I guess what I don't understand is why, I understand why we have maybe two, have two separate groups, maybe the post-65, but I don't understand why we, why we have the pre-65 or pre-retirees not involved with the group, because how many, how many's in that pre-retiree?
166, no starting number.
Well, if you take what is paid in and compare it to what's going to be paid out, I mean, it's doomed to be, to have more claims than it would have paid in. So, if we would, I would think if we meshed everything together, that we would, the law of large number would kick in.
Even if we did mesh everything together, the accounting requirements under Gadsby 45 require us to report how much our active employees are subsidizing retirees. I think some of this separation came about, and I believe it was in the 99-2000 budget year, when we first paid anything for our retirees' insurance. And since we did not pay the percentage that we paid for active employees, even if that, when it first started, I think that might be carved out as a separate group, and then broken into pre- and post-65s.
I missed one number along the way there, the pre-65 contribution. What did you say the percentage was?
Well, the recommendation on this version, there will probably be three versions presented at the insurance committee this Thursday, 1:00 forecast. This version recommends a 50 percent premium increase, which we all know is very steep. But the other, there were two insurance sheets at your place, but we're not, we're not. The other sheet, and I have one over here of this sheet, it's a fairly new piece of information that Ms. Stinson gives us, but the bottom half shows for this 2013 plan year. Insurance, we are on the calendar year, which increases the difficulty of our accounting and planning on increases. But our Cigna projected we would need, the last column to the right, that total group, Cigna projected we would need $58 million in premiums between the employee, the employer, and the retirees. If you, the last line in that section, we went with an overall 14 percent increase, which based on the projections, would only generate $53.3 million in revenue. And yet, Cigna was projecting our claims would be 4.6 million higher of that. We basically were taking a chance, well, maybe our claims history will be better. So, if you switch to the top half of it, this year, again, the top line in the top half under for 2014, we have 63.6 million projected premium requirement. Our expected revenue from premiums came in a million and a half lower than projected last year. And this gets updated as we move on. This was the first version that was handed out. At that point, we were looking at a 22.7 percent required overall increase. The under-65s, their claims history this year has deteriorated since this was prepared, that was handed out in March. The next set of numbers, we look at a 20, we look, our consultants, because of the timing difference between where we are in our fiscal year, and we're looking at setting rates that are going to affect in January of 2014, they look at a 23-month rolling trend, and the trend numbers for our under-65s have deteriorated. Right now, the most, updated for March, the second group of under-65s, where you see 90.9 percent, it's up to 160 percent. It will bear it during the year. But we had it last year at 122 percent, and we made the decision, let's try going with a 20 percent increase, surely our claims history will improve. It hasn't. And that is why this big sheet, a 50 percent increase, came out.
So, is, are you saying the reason that those two groups couldn't be meshed together is because of Gadsby?
Well, and that is not my call.
Okay, I mean, is that what you think?
Historically, that they have been separated.
I mean, that group is going to take a beating without being with the, with the larger group.
Yeah, yeah. And that is something that can be brought up to the insurance committee. The insurance committee only makes a recommendation that goes to the commission's budget committee. They're the ones who are the elected officials.
Who would crunch the numbers to find out what it would have been if our active employees in the pre-65 were merged?
On the four-page handout I just gave y'all, near the bottom third, is an update of what we emailed you after that April 4 meeting. The third item down factors in 24.7 percent increase, first page, page 1 of 4. Right now, we are showing a 1.5 percent increase to help subsidize our retiree rates. I would guess, that's all it is, that's about 1.4 million, 1.5 million. So, my guess would be, in order to get them to the same rate increase, if they weren't folded in, I'm guessing it would take that up to 2, 2 and 1/4, it could take 3 percent. Our actuaries would have to get into valuing that. But we would still have to report it on our financial statements as post-retirement insurance expenditure, and that our active employees are subsidizing it.
I mean, a group is exactly what it is. I mean, you know, we've got, we've got all these professionals that have given years and years of service, and then we've segmented them out, and that bothers me, that we've, you know, they should be in the group.
And that would ultimately be a decision that the commission would have to make.
I mean, is that something that we as a board can, can direct?
I would think you could send a request that that be.
That's what I mean, through our representatives?
I think it, I think it might be better if y'all made a formal request that we then carried forward, rather than me or Ms. Lawrence just bringing it up.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Now, I think it needs to come to the board if the board's willing, but, and please weigh in on this, but I see a separation here that is not fair to our retirees. And if there's some way for us to initiate a correction, I certainly think we should.
I still want to try and understand the contribution, the.
In our charts, because of our many options, our.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I don't feel as bad. Our post-65 non-grandfathered is a 50 percent contribution from the retiree and 50 percent from the system.
From the system.
Okay, our post-65 grandfathered are 75 percent from the system, 25 percent from the retiree. What is that breakdown on the pre-65 as it exists today?
For the pre-65s, it is just 50/50.
It is 50/50.
Some of the pre-65s will cross into that grandfather zone once they hit 65.
And what are the circumstances of that? How can they be grandfathered when they're not even there yet?
Because there was a point in time, if you had 30 years of service within the last couple of years, and I can bring that up on my PC. If you have 30 years of service, you go into this grandfathered group, which we pay a higher percentage of the premium. That is what was worked out 2009, 2010, 2011, they ran on for 20 years.
So, presently, at pre-65, they're a 50 percent contribution, but when they hit 65, they'll go to a 25 percent contribution.
Because they're on Medicare. So, basically, at that point, we are a supplemental plan, and this grandfathered group has pharmacy.
Okay, all right.
So, define grandfather.
Let me bring up.
Because it sounds to me like you're saying that if you have 30 years of service, you're in the grandfather group.
Well, let me put it on later, hit 30.
Less reason I'm asking the question.
I'm glad I scanned this today, so I won't miss anything. If, as of 12/31/2010, that was our final measurement point, oh, it wasn't grandfather, I'm sorry. Okay. If as of the last day of 2010, you had 30 years of service at Rutherford County, and five years of plan, I'm sorry, of service as of 12/31/2009, then you are one of the grandfather. For post-65s, you pay 25 percent and 50 percent for your dependents, for the Medicare Supplement and County Pharmacy Plan. The pre-65s pay what they had always paid, 50 percent of that adequate rate. So, it was, and those dates got changed, we had a lot, one of the changes was to our benefit. We had a lot of teachers and principals who were not quite, because they were counting when your insurance started. So, that date got moved back for us to September 30, and then there were some other peoples that got moved back to the end of the year, but we had a lot of teachers who had hit that, who were about to hit that 30-year mark, who had been excluded from grandfathering by weeks if that change not been made, and it was done for our benefit.
So, I'm just trying, is 30 years of service, is that the benchmark?
30 years of service as of 12/31/2010.
And five years, at least five years.
If I'm not mistaken, basically what you're talking about here is on the county website somewhere, correct?
Yes, sir. I can email this to y'all if you want to.
I think it'd be good to give everybody, I was in a meeting this afternoon, and a couple of issues come up, basically what you're saying is a complicated issue, I think, and the best thing, the advice that Melissa gave, is you call it courthouse, and they hand-figure it or whatever, so, she said it was complicated, but she says it's on the county website, so.
And I will email it to all of y'all.
Okay. When's your next insurance meeting, the 25th?
The 25th at 1:00 PM, yes, sir.
So, next Wednesday, Thursday, whatever?
What next Thursday?
I guess in response to Mr. Blair's request, if we want to wait till our board meeting next week, and draft something and send it with Mr. Sandbig, I guess.
Is that something that we, that we need to put on the agenda to, I mean, I know we're discussing now, but to actually take some kind of, if we decide to take some kind of action, to make a, I mean, is a recommendation something we have to do in an actual board meeting, other than this budget, this special call?
I think it needs to be on the agenda, I do.
I would like to request that, Mr. Chairman.
If you can add that to the next week's agenda, Ms. Martin.
Sure.
Before we move past that, I want to understand what Ms. Blair's interest is here, and let me say it to see if I understand.
Okay.
Right now, the premium for each of these groups is figured individually. You mentioned the four groups. So, a premium is figured for those that are active employees. A separate premium is figured for the pre-65, yet another for the post-65 grandfathered, and a fourth for the post-65 non-grandfathered, correct? Mr. Blair, your thought is one melting pot?
Well, I don't, I don't think we can do that. I think Gadsby prevents that.
And it's such a radically different product that we're providing for those people.
But it is my opinion that the actives and the pre-65s should be together because of the large number of actives and the smaller number of, and how many pre-65s do we have?
166.
166. If they're put together in one big melting pot, that would keep the pre-65s from getting beat up, so.
But they still would pay 50 percent.
Right, right. I understand that.
Well, yeah, I just, if y'all would like.
Yes, sir.
Where do you find the 166?
It is not on this sheet in conversations with Ms. Stinson this week, and I've been living insurance. Yep, three and a half, four hour, very crank meetings. On the top of this sheet where under the under-65, there shows 94.9 percent, if we had this updated with our March 2013 numbers, then it is up to 160 percent, from 90 to 160. We see tremendous swings in this category.
That's 160 percent. I'm looking for an enrollee number, and.
Oh, I have 165.
Okay.
52 plus 113 comes to 165, is what I.
I can go with that, yes.
That's what I'm reading.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff, the other question that's been asked me several times is, how does the rate for the Board of Education compare with the county general? And that, I think you might want to address that.
Depending on, we're kind of up in the air on a technical aspect of that. In the open enrollment materials, all Board of Ed employees, we take the same annual premium and divide it by 10. For the county general employees, we take that same, let's say it's 12, actually, I never thought I'd see it go over 12, or hope I wouldn't, okay, we'll say, for some of our family coverage, our employer contribution is over $1,000 a month. So, with county general, the employer contribution were 12,000 for full family coverage for that tier, we would deduct $1,000 for 12 months. For a Board of Ed employee, we would divide it by ten and we would deduct twelve hundred dollars for ten months. Those two premiums should be equal, but there is an arrears issue that we're arguing about.
And it's to whose detriment, whose benefit?
It is to the Board of Ed's detriment.
Okay.
It's counterlogical. I couldn't sleep the other night, and I worked through the algebra until a quarter of eleven before I convinced myself with algebra. It is counterlogical because we have, in a school year, we have four months, September through December, in one plan year. If there's a rate increase, then we have six months at the new higher rate. A county general employee pays the six months, they pay over twelve, so they pay July through December at the lower rate, and then they pay January through June at the higher rate. It's counterlogical, but I convinced myself of it finally, be, because we're dealing with different years and we view it as a school year. We want all of our employees come, classified staff, get two deductions taken out in May, salary, then all the teachers get their last deduction taken out in June. We don't owe anything for July or August. We are fully paid up. If you retire as of the end of the school year, you have, you and we have already prepaid July and August, and you would go on retiree insurance in September. There is a slight, this year it's one point one percent difference due to that arrears, which is counterlogical, but I agree.
But the, but the premium per person starts out the same.
Yes.
And the difference is, what he's saying is, comes is when you have this arrears, when they change it in January. Since we do not start in January, we start back in August. In July, so what you run into is, that's where the difference is. But the rate per person is the same for the county general as it is for a Board of Ed. The difference is, is when it goes up in a January gap and how you accumulate that difference.
And it's a minor number, but it is a valid number. We're just-
Let me, let me ask one of those questions that other board members will go, I can't believe you asked that question. But is there a reason, is there a benefit? Would it make your accounting department's life so much easier if we said, hey, everybody's going to get paid on a twelve-month schedule and we're not going to have that discrepancy? Or is it just intrinsic in the school system because of the school year?
It's intrinsic in the nature of our employees.
That's okay. I can accept that.
For hourly ten-month employees, it will be a violation of federal labor laws, so we don't go there.
No problem.
And we still have a fair number of teachers who have opted, some of them, if you start late in the year, we have to put you on the ten-month pay schedule for that first year. So we really, we couldn't do away with all of them.
I can accept that, just have to ask.
That's been asked before.
Okay, good. It'll get asked again, probably.
We, we, we have, that was one of the points we were discussing in Monday's insurance meeting, when I was meeting with Lois and Tom.
Okay. Back to Mr. Blair's concern here about how many melting pots and, and everything, and that's my oversimplification of this. But one of the things that I'm noticing is, am I, am I correct, a thousand seventy participants in the active employees? Am I, am I seeing that number correctly?
No, if you will go over under column one, where I wrote the one in the circle, look down the enrollment number in that.
Three thousand six hundred fifty-three. Now I'm happy. Okay, no problem. What is that, what is that enrollment of a thousand seventy? What, what is that?
That is county general, which includes the sheriff.
Oh, so that's not even our column?
No, that is not even our column.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are, are other, are these other columns?
Those, those, the first and-
Because they're not like-
The columns or numbers I did not number are for county general and the other county departments. All of them are on a twelve-month basis.
Got it.
So if you take, except for rounding, if you take the county general individual employee of forty-two dollars and ten cents, multiply it by twelve, divide it by ten, within, within that rounding, that is our rate. That is what our employee pays for ten months. But a county general employee pays for a lower twelve-month rate, they equal.
The million-dollar question to me right now is, is there an opportunity, say this board recommends to the insurance committee and the insurance committee recommends to the county commission to put the active employees and the pre-sixty-five retirees into one group? Is there a, do we have a timeframe where this horrible increase for the pre-sixty-five, can that be, can that be corrected?
I don't know if, and I, I, I just don't know if the necessary changes and approvals could be done in time. I, I have no idea on that. Because in addition to whatever we do at county commission level, we would have to change our plan documents, all those items. So, and I don't know how quickly those pieces would take. Yeah. There, there would have to be some serious evaluation for changes.
I, I certainly hope we, I hope there's an opportunity here because fifty percent is, is just,
Yes.
Just, you know, from, from where I sit would be, I, doesn't affect me personally, but if I was in that position, that would be just, just unheard of.
You know, there's an old saying that, uh, layers use statistics and statistics. And, and, and what I'm, I say that to say, when you only have a hundred and sixty-six in a group, if you have one individual who has that major claim, then it appears that all one hundred and sixty-six have a major claim. And that's not true. And that's why it could vary greatly from year to year. Whereas if they were together, it tends to minimize those amounts, large ones and smalls, tends to be averaged.
But, Mr. Owen, one of the things, and Mr. Blair, one of the things we did in trying to justify this lower fifty percent increase instead of a hundred, with February numbers, it was a hundred and thirty-something. One of the things we did in each of those years, we had a claim that went over the stop loss in this pre-sixty-five group. We took them out. So we, we did a substantial move. If we had not let, if we had left those, but that, that was how we were trying to justify going with fifty percent. We adjusted our-
But we're, we're punishing a moral, a moral group of, of employees.
We tried to do something to, you know, logically come up with a way to minimize that.
Is, excuse me, is a, is a similar, is there a similar plan for county general folks to retire at thirty years of service and be in a pre-sixty-five group?
This is fine to us and to county general. Everyone in the Rutherford County insurance is under this, the same guideline.
So they're looking at the same.
Yes.
So those both are under the same.
For both groups.
And are we seeing any of those enrollees here?
The, in the retiring group, it is blended, yes. Most of them are Board of Ed because we are more than seventy percent of the employees.
Sure, okay.
There are county general employees in there, yes.
So in total, for the county, we're looking at the combination of our, uh, three thousand six hundred fifty-three active enrollees and a thousand seventy county general enrollees. But then when we get down here, the reason you've only got one block here, these are all the retirees.
They are all on, they all pay their premiums on that twelve-month basis. It's really too small a route to, yeah.
So a recommendation that the Board of Education might make that would affect the pre-sixty-fives could potentially benefit a county general pre-sixty-five. Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, yeah.
But, excuse me, but you're saying it's too late to enact it this year?
Maybe not.
Well, or, but our next plan year starts January first.
Okay.
I don't know how long it'll take to go through the hoops if it is approved, to get all of the pieces in place, to have everything in place January first.
But if we do something, or if the committee accepts it, would it be too late for them to get the county? I mean, we all have to do it at the same time, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, this recommendation will go to the commission's budget committee on, and I'm sorry, just take me a second, let me look it up. On May ninth. And then we, the rates, I think, would then go to the full commission on May sixteenth. I am not certain on that. It's a chance, it could turn into June. But since everyone is working on their, their budgets for the next fiscal year, everyone needs the, we're hoping it will be approved in May.
Just a quick nugget, Jeff, is, on that insurance committee, is there, is there any way, I guess since you're on that committee, why this information can't be gathered a whole lot faster than what it is? I mean, we're here, like Mr. Nippers, you know, questioning on a timescale, uh, we're here a week before y'all have your final meeting. And we're, if you want to say, somewhat in the dark.
Well, and the insurance committee, did we miss three, did we cancel three meetings in a row? If we don't have bids or other items on the agenda, the meetings are canceled and three in a row were canceled.
But it, it, it just, business-wise, it just doesn't make any sense to me that you're sitting here racking your brain, right? And we're trying to get this information a, a week before, and, and we question something, send it up there, and it's, it won't be enacted. I mean, that's, that's sort of where I have a problem with it, that, uh, we're, we're the biggest, uh, piece of this pie and got the least amount of say-so it sounds like.
Absolutely.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, uh,
Well, and, and just, when the board was, when it was approved, the board had another member need in order to not, well, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't phrase it that way. They added two other positions from various branches of county government at the same time. So our, yeah, yeah, we have three out of, three, and one of those is the REA rep.
Well, we have seventy, plus seventy percent of the participants, but, and how many's on the committee?
Fourteen.
And we have three?
Right.
And just to, something's not quite right there.
Yeah.
Well, I think we just carry on what we, we planned, if that's agreeable with everybody, and, uh, if we want to add to that recommendation, uh, any board member's feelings or whatever, we just send them along with it, I guess. So.
I, I think I feel compelled to disclose, for, I guess, everybody, most folks would understand that I fall in that category. So I've tried to stay as quiet as I can from a board perspective because I have a personal interest in this. So please don't take my lack of speaking otherwise, but I, I think it's probably best from my personal perspective that I share, share not my personal feelings, just the, the board feeling. I'm not sure I can separate too at this point.
Ms. Blair, I think it's a good thought, and, uh, I appreciate you getting that on the agenda. And, uh, I think it is something that we should certainly take action on, uh, next week. It, it looks like a discrepancy that everyone else will notice along the way. Uh, I certainly hope that they will notice it with a plan of action that we have offered, and it'll give them something to pick up and use when they go, wow, that seems out of line.
Certainly an opportunity to correct something that isn't fair at this point.
If I may go back to one other point I meant to make earlier, as we talk of this, as we mention this Gadsby forty-five, just the, and it, all of this stuff, it's a serious, uh, item for a long-term liability of our insurance. Our liability, which we have to show on our county-wide financial statements, is going up just over a million dollars a month for post-retirement benefits that we are not yet funded. When, when this was approved, it was in the twenty-seven million dollar range. As of March, the end of March, it hit sixty million, seven hundred eighty-three thousand that we have not funded. And that, that is including the cost of need of our, just the-
But are those projections for twenty and thirty years down the road?
Right. They are actuarial projections, but it is something we have to discourage, and that number is going up by over a million a month now.
Mr. Odom, will you go back to your statement?
There was lots of question nationally over Gadsby forty-five, and there've been lots of arguments both ways.
Fuzzy figure is.
Are y'all ready for me to go on into the amendments?
You want to talk about the other budget about, because there's almost no dollar change. I think you told them about all the differences.
Right, right.
But in the insurance-
Okay, one more insurance question.
Yes, sir.
Are we locked into anything with retirees as we move forward? Or if it becomes necessary due to budget constraints to adjust circumstances for retirees' contribution, et cetera? Do we even have the ability to make adjustments there? Not that we would, but if it became necessary.
I think under the law, we do.
Okay.
Don't hold me of that statement, but I believe we do.
I understand. And, and we've got enough on the plate to just deal with this pre-sixty-five issue. But in the future, it may be appropriate as the post-sixty-five grandfathered. Um, if we could move that toward the non-grandfathered, that one year at a time or something like that, we're talking about one year at a time, that we went from seventy-five, twenty-five to seventy-six, twenty-four to seventy-seven, et cetera. You know, just in a, in a measure of trying to manage the expense and the exposure. I don't even think we ought to discuss that right now, but I put it out there just to say that in the future, we may not be able to maintain a seventy-five, twenty-five.
And what we, what we did do by that grandfathering, we did limit it to pe, it is that group of people who had thirty years as of the end of two thousand nine.
Right.
So we limited that group right then and there.
Right.
So-
And it's only the supplement.
We'll see some growth in it, but it's been capped.
Okay, all right.
There are actors from county commissions. You look at that first column, just the county employees, like the employees plus family, eighty-seven percent or eighty-seven percent. There, some of them talking about changing that number to lower, to a lower number. So even after what we do, this thing could change again on the commission floor. That is what we're saying. And, and since we match them, um, you know, we'd have to make a decision, um, you know, what we do in, in that action.
And it is my strong feeling that while, as long as we keep our rates and are in the plan with county employees, I think that improves our chances of us getting appropriate funding as these increases come across. I think if we were to move to the state teachers' plan, we would not have that much support for that addition on the harsh reality.
I agree with you. Uh, looks like we've got eight or nine, uh, budget amendments here. And if it's okay, we'll let Mr. Odom do each one of these. And if any board members have any questions, just refer to Mr. Sandbig if that works. Is it okay?
Yes, we vote.
No, let's just, let's just take them out of my eye.
Oh, okay.
Uh, if you have any questions, say, we'll go along.
Yes, sir.
Was that number one, Mr. Odom?
Okay, for our new members, typically this time of year because state- Okay, for our new members, typically this time of year, because state revenue has changed and sometime expenditures changed, this is kind of an annual, uh, thing that we have to go through to, to get our line items balanced again. They're amendment from your original budget, so you'll kind of see this as you go through, but that's what we're doing. Um, number one, certified staff. This amendment real allocates twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars in teacher pay and benefits, and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight in already budgeted teacher pay, and one thousand four hundred and thirty-five in related changes in two thousand twelve, thirteen benefits in order to cover the school year. The motion is to amend twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirteen, and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight in already budgeted teacher pay, and one thousand four hundred and thirty-five in related benefits in order to cover staff changes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two.
Number two is classified staff. This amendment real allocates seventy-five thousand, six hundred and six dollars in already budgeted classified staff pay and benefits, sixty-seven thousand and sixty-two dollars in pay, and eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four in related benefits in order to cover staff changes that have occurred in a two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. The motion is to amend seventy-five thousand, six hundred and six in already budgeted classified staff pay and benefits, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-two in pay, and eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four in related benefits in order to cover staff changes as presented.
For the recommendation?
Do you approve it? Second.
A motion by Mr. Tackett, a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion with Holliday?
Is the percentage, and I'll say this, you know, carrying, we, uh, we missed it? Is, did we miss it about the same percentage on these two, you know, between certified and classified staff?
The, uh, my entry for teacher pay, we had a trance, we had a retirement. The person who went into the slot has a higher degree. So, it, it tends to be stuff like that. This twenty-four million, six hundred and seventy-eight, I'm sorry, twenty-four thousand, six hundred, that is on a hundred and fifty million dollars in our budget.
Okay, and...
It is immaterial rounding.
And likewise on classified?
Classified, that's on about twenty million dollars. Yeah. Just the some line items, I will wind up under or over because of changes in staff, overtime and maintenance, yeah, very minor stuff like that.
No problem.
Can we just move the money around?
Just transfer.
In line item numbers, that's what you're doing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three.
This is the basic education program mid-year insurance fund. This amendment budgets the two hundred and seventy thousand in additional state BEP funds the system will receive for the mid-year insurance increase in the lines where they may be needed and adjust other miscellaneous insurance lines based on a two thousand thirteen plan year. The motion is to amend two hundred and seventy thousand in additional state BEP funds that the system will receive for the mid-year insurance increase to the insurance lines and to adjust other miscellaneous insurance lines as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four.
Special education high-cost students. This amendment budgets the two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six in state flow-through funds for high-cost special ed students the system receives. These funds must be budgeted for the current year non-administrative special ed expenditures. The amendment increases expenditures in the budget line items where we think they will be needed. And can I explain this? Uh, students in special education are on different option numbers, and based on that option number, uh, it changes how much you expend on that student and how much the state pays for that student. So, it could be students coming in, it could be students that were modified during the year. But as the option numbers go up, the state contributes additional funds for that student, and that's what this amendment is for all year, basically, really.
And, and also on that one, Mr. Oden, what Miss Bell does is like our, our genesis, very high-cost program. We run it through our GP budget because then it's eligible for some of this. If we ran it through our federal budget, we wouldn't get any, but not, so.
Recommend, uh, the motion be approved.
I didn't read it.
Go ahead and read it, and then we'll get this...
The motion is to amend two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars in state flow-through funds for high-cost special ed students to the special education budget line item as presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday, a second by Ms. Blankenship, correct? Any further discussion, Mr. Holliday?
I think it's worth pointing out, uh, you know, in, in discussions about central office staff and our accounting department and such, we would not be realizing these funds. Mr. Oden, what you just explained is if we were not tracking carefully and, and taking specific note of not only classifying each of these students, but classifying, classifying them in the right category and in the right manner, we would not be capitalizing with as many, as much funding as we could realize from the state. Uh, so when we're trying to justify non-classroom personnel, uh, you know, this is an example right here of two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that's coming to our system because of the good work of special education administration as well as the accounting department.
Number five?
Uh, number five, correct.
Number five is miscellaneous revenues. This amendment budgets thirty-six thousand in rental income for the custodians apartments in our high schools, which offsets the flow-through expenditure in custodian pay and benefits we had to record per the audit. The balance of amendments deals with contributions. It takes twenty-one thousand, one seventy-five from fund balance for a two thousand eleven, twelve donation from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation and budgets it for staff development for our spectrum program, which is seventy-two, two twenty-five, twenty-four. The amendment also budgets fifty-nine thousands in other donations to the line items designated by the donors. The motion is to amend twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five from fund balance to seventy-two, two twenty-dash-five, twenty-four, special education staff development, thirty-six thousand in rental income, which offsets the flow-through pay and benefits, and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and six in donations with the related expenditures as presented.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I got us out of step there. We need to vote on the motion for number four before we go to number five.
Number four?
Oh, did we vote for number four? I'm sorry, I didn't...
You, you got us out of motion, and then you put us back in motion.
I, I, I am messing myself there.
You hit us twice on that last one.
Yep, good number.
You heard Mr. Oden's reference.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Blair?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six.
Number six is career ladder and extended contract. This amendment reduces state career ladder revenues by one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eighteen, and reduces career ladder expenditures by one hundred and fifty-eight thousand in pay and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen in related benefits. It also real allocates two thousand in state extended contract expenditures and related three hundred and thirty-one dollars in benefits in order to cover a staff reassignment due to retirement last year. Recommend motion to amend, to reduce state career ladder revenues by one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eighteen, to reduce related career ladder expenditures by one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eighteen, and to move two thousand, one hundred and thirty-three in extended contract expenditures from seventy-one, one hundred, regular education, to seventy-two, two twenty, special education program as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven.
Number, um, the next one is the centralized cafeteria budget fund, one forty-three. I might say, I asked Mr. Blair today, you know, the feds relaxed some of their early regulations for, uh, how many, how much we could serve students and, and things like that, it changed it. And actually, he said, I think, last month, first time, they had exceeded the same month last year for the number of students eating. So, it, it goes to show, when you feed them a little bit more and you change that menu to be more acceptable, they returned and started eating, so I just thought that was interesting.
And he wouldn't talk about that.
Okay, this is revenue in the cafeteria fund is a loose estimate at this point. Federal reimbursement rates haven't been released yet. Based on March two hundred, two, twenty thirteen results, the budget starts with eighteen million, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars in budgeted revenue, and nineteen million, eighty-nine thousand, five, nine hundred and fifty-three in budgeted expenditures. This budget is balanced by using seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three from the fund's reserves, restricted for school nutrition. Equipment expenditures are being increased to one million, two hundred thousand in order to fund cafeteria renovations. And the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget is in the yellow column. That's the one that you've got, the other sheet right there.
Yes, sir.
Unlike our other budgets, money in the cafeteria fund can only be used for cafeteria operations and equipment, and our goal is to have no more than three months of operating capital in our reserves. We have to spend down our reserves in order to minimize excess reserves. As of March, we have one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-three in excess for this three-month requirement. Recommend the motion is to approve two thousand thirteen, fourteen centralized cafeteria budget fund, one forty-three, with eighteen million, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred in budgeted revenues, nineteen million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three in budgeted expenditures, and a reduction of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three in the fund's reserves, restricted for school nutrition as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight.
And this is two hundred and twelve, thirteen centralized cafeteria budget amendment fund, one forty-three. The two thousand twelve, thirteen centralized cafeteria budget amendment reduces revenues by a net of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven, decreases expenditures by a net of thirty-eight thousand, forty-three, and reduces the reserves restricted for school nutrition by two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. One hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven, forty-seven dollars of the decrease in reserves is to cover two equipment purchases that are needed this school year, a compressor and a hood system. The motion is to amend two hundred and twelve, uh, for the two thousand twelve, thirteen centralized cafeteria budget amendment by reducing the revenues by a net of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, decreasing expenditures by a net of thirty-eight thousand, forty-three dollars, and reducing reserves restricted for school nutrition by two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And those were on, of course, but you have the other sheet, which has the yellow and blue, which we were talking about.
I'd like, back, back to the central cafeteria budget, uh, I'd just like to, I know Mr. Blair's not here, uh, the, the real Mr. Blair, yes, sir.
Brother Mr. Blair.
I'd just like to commend him for the job that he does in this area, because I can remember before we, we got off on this deal, uh, and I know Mr. Sandbig does, uh, it seemed like we stayed in the hole more than we did anything else, couldn't buy any equipment or anything. And now, we ought to have the best equipment around, I guess, uh, you know, since everything's got to be spent within.
Well, and, and what we faced before we centralized, we had forty-some cafeteria funds, monoply, thirty-some. So, we have one that we have a surplus and we buy everything for, we have one a deficit we couldn't buy anything for unless we use county borrowed money.
I think, I think we attribute a lot of that to his, uh, leadership on that, so I'd just like to make mention of that. Uh, do you have anything else, Mr. Oden?
In our next meetings, you may want to remind them of, related to this.
We got, uh, Ms. Michael, you'll have to pull that one up for me. I got, uh, our meetings for next week, for, uh, Monday and Tuesday. I think everybody got the changes on those.
Twenty-second and twenty-third, five.
The board meetings for next, our next budget meeting is, we got it.
Uh, May the seventh at five-thirty.
Okay. Everybody put that on your calendar.
When is our meeting, joint meeting, Jeff? Do you remember this?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
So, we need to make as many changes as we can. If you have other suggestions or something, by the seventh in preparation for our joint meeting.
And we do have, under the private acts, we do have to go ahead and give the courthouse these numbers so they can be consolidating them. That's, that's all it is, but...
At that time?
Well, I think the deadline is like Tuesday or something. But we will give them these numbers and the best revenue numbers we can give them at this point.
Anything else? Anything else, we're adjourned.